Our blood and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A lot of people here tonight. Hope I don't speak loud enough for everyone to hear me. Uh, roll call, I have, let's see, Becker.
Eric.
Franzen.
Eric.
Peterson.
Yep.
Delaney.
Eric.
Knapp here, and Dennis Stumpowski is absent. Alright.
Is there any additions to the agenda that anybody wants to change or all of them?
Um, I have a couple. I wanted to, the first public comment, is that supposed to be on agenda items only? And then the final public comment, agenda comment?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
I want to change your debate, you only can speak once in each public comment.
Well, that goes without saying. Um, then, the other thing that I asked, wanted to know about, was when I went through my, my minutes, we discussed Article 3, and reading three through six, that we weren't gonna really touch one and two quite yet, so that's why I wondered.
I kinda went through all of them just to see.
So, I, I read through, I read through, this is my third time reading through. No, because that was mostly stuff about the Planning and Enabling Act.
Right.
Things that we can't change because we're under law for those things.
No other changes or anything? But, can we, I accept, I take the motion to accept the agenda as permitted? The move, and we get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? Alright.
Aye.
Pass. We got our minutes from last month's meeting? If any discrepancies with that, bring it up. I don't think they got solar ordinances from other township. I think they're working on this. I wonder if they're doing. You guys have some practice?
Yeah.
I don't remember if you knew it anyway. I separated it since it's in.
Yeah, I think it came from.
No, I was, I emailed.
Andy's not doing it.
The two sets of solar ordinances, the from Sidney and from Riga Township. That was sent to you guys, I can't access my email right now, but it was.
Does anybody else?
Eight weeks ago.
No, I couldn't.
Okay. Did you get the copies of these?
May ninth was when I sent you guys Sidney and the Riga Township ordinances again, so if you wanna look in your emails, it's May ninth.
I don't see anything where I've got any discrepancies here. I take the motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting. The move, is there a second on that? The move and second here to approve the meetings for last month's meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Right. All opposed? Motion passed. I guess that opens us up for the public comment for the first part of the agenda.
I guess, Michelle resigned, it's on a letter on April 3rd, which was a Sunday, our meeting was April 7th. When asked at the April meeting, we were told she was absent, and we were not told until the May meeting that she resigned. Why did you know four days prior to the meeting, but lie to us about it?
I did get it in my emails that that time, I actually stuffed it in with my spam.
And you're the only one she emailed?
Yeah, as far as I know.
I was finding.
No, it went to the supervisor and the clerk as well.
And nobody said anything, not even at the next board meeting. So, once again, you're reading the township, Gail is there being lied to because it's false information, given whether you knew it or not, it states here that it was April 3rd she resigned. And how did you know she was gonna be absent?
She called.
She called you and said, "I'm gonna be absent," but yet, four days prior to that, she mailed in a, emailed in her resignation.
Yes.
So, why wouldn't she call in and say she was going to be absent?
I told her that she still had to come in order to, for us to approve her resigning.
Okay, so you told her she still had to come for her to approve, for you to approve her resigning, but you just told me you never got the email till after the meeting. So, right there, you just told a whole nother circle of lies. So, that's why the township has no faith in the board, because simple things get lied to about us.
To us.
To us, sorry. Makes us feel like you're hiding something, like you guys wrote on an agenda for that month to go find somebody for position. You slide them in, that'll make you guys do it.
Anybody else?
Um, the five people that had expressed interest in the vacancy for Michelle, has that gone to board?
I believe it has.
Yes. At the last month's meeting, I handed them a list of the five names that were in the minutes. And I have not been aware of anybody else putting their name forward. I haven't heard from anybody else.
Anybody else? There's nothing else, then we'll move on to open business, which was apartments, Articles 1 through 6, or 3 through 6, I guess. Dennis Stumpowski stopped by giving a sketch of his business report book about some of the things he's seen out here. Article 1 he's got down here, 1-2, Section 103D. Where are we starting? Article 1, see here down here, it's also the purpose of the ordinance to establish land development regulations designed for limiting the location height, old numbers or stories using, and size of dwelling, buildings, and structures that may be erected or altered, including tents and recreational vehicles, and to develop procedures for enforcement and penalty to ensure compliance with those provisions.
Which one are you reading from now?
One of the article.
103D.
103D.
And he's got, I believe that the point it states, including tents, temporary structures should be inserted.
Did he give reasoning of why he felt that that was needed to be in there? Of temporary structures, because I know that later on in our ordinance, it does establish about temporary structures.
Okay, so, do you believe that is a question on that? There, does this gain later, will you do them? You believe it's in later?
It is, because I read it later, and, um, just trying to locate it currently. Yeah, Section 311 covers temporary structures and uses. Section 1, Section 311 covers temporary structures and uses, alright, so.
Uh, the next one was Article 2, 2-1, 201.
Under administration? Under administration and enforcement, Article 201. Is it administration, what did he want to change on now?
Last one, uh, a police officer should be struck as a township has no authority to give person police powers without the proper training and certifications. That's where he stated that that verse.
I guess that's something we need to ask about, because that was in there, and I'm assuming that is because the zoning administrator and/or enforcement officer does have the right to write tickets under the Planning and Enabling Act. So, that is, I believe that's why they are using the words, power of a police officer, being able to cite tickets.
It clarifies jurisdiction is the enforcement, so that.
Of the ordinance, yeah, it's not saying that they have the power of an actual police officer to arrest Patty Bassett for walking drunkenly down the middle of the road, it's just saying that.
Nice choice.
Nice, right? But it's, it's, yeah, it clarifies that whose jurisdiction is the enforcement of this ordinance, so I don't feel that we need to change that, because this has already gone through our lawyer, as far as that goes. Can't do it anymore.
Maybe they don't know.
Well, I think, I kind of, I see what he's seeing here, the zoning administrator shall have the power of a police officer.
But then, the next portion of it clarifies what their enforcement is.
Jurisdiction is the enforcement of this force.
And I could see where, uh, but I could see where he stole. Probably doesn't have the authority of a police officer.
They're using it as an example. I can see that he's taking offense to the words, "police officer," but I think he's taking it just slightly too personally, and just needs to read it within the context of this ordinance, stating that the zoning administrator has the right to write tickets of things enforcing this ordinance.
Within this.
Within this ordinance, and it, it clarifies it, so I don't find the problem.
In other words, he's not gonna write one for, any for being drunk.
Exactly.
It gets thrown out.
Exactly. Exactly.
I'm gonna take it.
So, I personally don't find a problem with the video.
YouTube.
Video is fine.
Yeah, I'm not seeing a problem with it either, states are pretty clear when he's along.
Yeah.
If it just stopped at officer, I could see it, but it clarifies it. Okay, he's got under here Article 2, 2-5. 2 what? 2-5, Section 206B.
206B, as in boy?
Yeah. Where the sentence reads, "General circulation in the township add or published electronically, e.g. township site, etc." Yeah, I had some questions on this one too, because it just says newspaper, I don't know if it should be specific or not, to what newspaper, or any newspaper, and. Yeah, it kind of, it should be added to the website.
Right, great. And I agree, it needs to have it both places, because we do use a website to keep our, our minutes, and that is clearly stated in the Open Meeting Act, that if we use our website consistently, and if basically, if we use it monthly, it only has to be once a month, then that is something that has to be listed.
Okay.
Okay, while we're in this section here.
Okay.
I have 205, 4B. The location setbacks, dimensions, like, no, I think I'm in the wrong spot.
Well, before you continue on, Anne, I just wanna clarify what we're adding to that public section 206B, that you'd like it to read, that having it published in a newspaper of general circulation, and posted to the township website?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't know why I wrote 205, 4B. Because what I want added is that you should add a photo ID along with the other proof, and I believe that's gonna be in number 3. require a scale map.
Because it does that again.
Proof of ownership and title shall be required in an application for a zoning permit in order to establish interest in property and the right to proceed.
Where are you at?
B1. I don't know why I wrote that before then, but, um, I feel that they should add also in there that they must show a photo ID. I saw on, I don't know if it was documentary, or the news, or whatever, but when you go to the clerk's office to register your property, you don't have to show a photo ID, which means I could go in there and say, "I wanna register this in my name and give him Denny's address," and they won't ask for the proof, and then apparently, what I understand, they're not allowed to, I don't know why, but for the protection of people, I think proof of ownership with a corresponding photo ID. I mean, I have to show photo ID with my insurance card when I go to the doctor, make sure it's me and my insurance.
I see where she's at. So, Anne, you're speaking of Section 205?
B1.
B, and then 1. Under proof of ownership?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe so.
There should be submitted to the zoning administrator, an application for zoning permit. An application for zoning permit is subject to the following, and the one is, proof of ownership slash equitable title shall be required with any application for a zoning permit. So, what they're saying there is that they would probably have to bring in their tax bill?
Yes.
But I think.
That's basically your tax bill for approval ownership?
Yeah, yeah, that would be.
Is that something?
That would show they're paying the, uh, yeah, the taxes paid.
I can understand, because you can go to the clerk's office and get somebody's tax.
B1.
The tax I, okay, uh, if you pay, if I paid the tax on my mom's place, it'll still show that the tax is paid, and still have her name, and the parcel number on that receipt, or whatever.
Now, that's kinda like the one that was, uh, going for the zoning change, so that they could start to small empty shop. He's doing it as, on somebody else's property, where she had to give him authorization.
Yeah.
So, again, um, you almost gotta show proof of.
That it's approved by the landowner.
But Anne's saying, how do you know that that's that person? The landowner, yeah. How do you know?
You don't know everybody.
I don't know many people.
Right.
But that's one, I guess it'd be nice to see a photo ID when they actually turn the application into you, to make sure who they are, right?
Well, see, the photo ID, they might mail it to me, so they can send me a photo ID, and I don't know if that's him.
But the address on the photo ID will be the same as the address on the application. No, not necessarily, you have people that live at the lake.
Yeah.
Paul Redolinski, for example, he's building a house, while when he sends something today, he's gonna send it with his walk or address, he's not gonna send it with a, uh, Bob Masters, Thomas, whatever, address, because that's not where it's mailed to, so that's not gonna work either. You can't say that just because it's not their address on the ID that it's on.
Right. Can't Andrew assess his name is whatever he just said?
Right, it's gonna show that that's who he is.
He can show a photo ID that says, yes, this is so-and-so.
But he says it's, people mail them to him, you can use anybody's ID and mail them.
But if they've got a photocopy of the ID, if it should go to court for some reason, because it finds out that it was a fraudulent thing, at least you've got some sort of ID on hand. Might also help with blight problems, too, getting photo IDs, not even regarding.
That's if they apply for permit for something, but typically, these people have blight issues, they're not wanting for.
Yeah, I don't.
Permit of any type, right.
I know. I don't, it just felt like to me, it just seemed like they should have a photo ID clause in there, and they shouldn't complain about it. I complained when they don't ask for it, when I think that they should, so.
But you can do this through the mail thing?
What's that?
They can apply through the mail?
Yeah, a lot of times I get it, uh, through the mail, you know, where they can, we're dropping off, I have a box at my house where they can drop it off.
Now, you still, you still have to go to a site?
I don't always, it doesn't say it's required.
Okay.
Well, if it's, uh, I've gone out to number up, it's, uh, I can add a lot of size, odd shape, or, um, something that.
Considered.
Yeah, then I go out and check it out, or talk to them a lot, you know, on the phone, then.
They're already sending you photocopies out, see why they should have a problem sending you their photocopy.
Say, if they send a tax bill?
Okay, yeah, the tax bill would be good, but, uh, the photo ID wouldn't do any good like, uh, you were saying, I'm sorry, I don't remember names too well, um, you know, but if they, the photo, or the.
If they're a lake dweller and they don't actually live there.
Yeah, exactly.
It's because it's their second home.
A couple of my kids have difficulty in Michigan and, uh.
I'm not worried about the address portion of it, I'm worried about the name of the person and their photograph, make sure they match.
But if he's not seeing them, if they're being mailed in, it's, it's not gonna matter.
Yeah.
Just a concern I have.
No, I can see it. Ways are home to this also.
And when you do, do written notices on things, and send it by mail, is that registered mail?
Uh, violation notices?
Yeah.
No. And, uh.
So, you don't even know, they can say they never got it.
Out of all the townships I deal with, uh, Richland Township's the only one for violation, and theirs is a misdemeanor and the attorney's involved, so everything has to be registered for him, I don't know why. But I've gone to court a lot for people, and it's never been an issue. If they don't respond to it, um, I've taken it to court, and they'll send, I write the ticket, and they'll still. Some of them have a court date.
Okay, alright, I was just curious.
The truth comes out in court, the judge gets pretty good knowing if you're lying or not.
I just, I was reading something in here and thought, I wonder if that's my registered name, so. I was just curious.
Uh, he's also got here Article 2, 2-6, Section 206.
Section 206.
Oh, 2-6, this is the P camera, okay.
Okay, so, we're at public notice, Section 206, which portion?
Uh, same thing, I believe it's just the Article 2 there, uh, or Section 2, where it says, "Public notice shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation, and the township may last 15 days before the date the subject of the public notice will be heard or considered for approval." And he's got same as above, so I'll, I'll try it.
And I have it listed on there, so I can make it out.
He's got Article 2, Section 201, or, excuse me, Article 2, 2 through 7, Section 207B. And I goes back to, return to Article 2, uh, Section 201, police. Back to the police thing, I guess.
Back to the police thing. Well, I'd like to go to the same section, Section 207P, and the violation for the, I'd like to look at the amount that we have listed there. Because I think that we need to, I feel that the violation amounts need to be enough to make them, you know, you get your first written letter that says, hey, this is what we find is an issue. Your second one, if they, if Dave has to come back out and give you a second one, it shouldn't be just a hundred dollars, it should be five hundred dollars. It should be significant enough to make you say, you know what, boy, I got in a letter, I need to actually clean this place up, or do whatever the violation is. Instead of, you know, well, then we'll go down the road, and he'll have to go back two, three, four times, and, you know, pedally fart around.
Ain't that kinda one way of reading it, so, it says.
Well, it says for the, not less than a hundred dollars for the first offense.
And not less than five hundred for a subsequent offense.
Well, what I'm saying is, you know, so Dave, let me ask you this. That, that's what I'm saying, is Dave, so when you go out, are you fining them a hundred dollars right off?
No, I don't fine them, what this is, the fine is, uh, uh, added to it as the judge in court, he'll tell them, he'll read our book, I mailed to the township to the court, so they know our lines, and they'll fine them that hundred dollars. Now, the second offense, if I go out there and give them a notice, and, uh, I talk to the magistrate about this, and, uh, the second offense, is, I ran into an issue a couple years ago with that, the second offense wouldn't be considered a second offense unless it goes to court. The first offense has to be seen by the judge before it's considered the first offense, and the second offense, you have to make sure the judge.
So, I mean, the second time goes to court, then.
Yeah, but we can't say it's your second offense, the judge has to find him guilty of.
The hundred dollars don't mean nothing to him.
That's what I mean, that's why a hundred dollars means nothing, so that's why I think we should make the, the first offense five hundred dollars.
Or their first fine.
Or your first fine.
Yeah, because it, that's not just, if I give them a notice, I give them a notice, that's not really legally considered their first offense, if they straighten it out, that's fine.
Yep.
But if it goes to court, they have plenty of time, they have thirty days.
And I think if it goes to court, we need to have something in there that says, you know what, the township should give back some of its money for, you know, having to have to deal with going to court, and.
Legally, they're, we're supposed to get it back, I don't know how the courts do that, or if they do get it back, but they get a certain percentage of every fine. That's what I heard from the courts.
So, I guess that's my thought, is to make that first one, instead of a hundred dollars, make it five hundred dollars.
A hundred bucks still sucks nowadays.
Well, it certainly does, but you know what, a lot of people don't even pay attention to that, and don't care. And that's part of the problem.
We kinda went through this, but it took us like, two or three months to finally clean it up, so we would've been thousands into this when we were actually trying, but you only get thirty days.
But if you were making an effort, and Dave went out there and saw that you were making an actual effort, then that's where that discrepancy comes in. But we're having problems with blight, where people are doing nothing, nothing, literally nothing. And it's been, going on two, three years, where this stuff has been to the point where you're like, well, is there still a vehicle there? Because there's so much stuff growing around it, or top of it, you know, stuff, stuff's on top of it. You can't tell what it used to be. So, that's why I feel.
Just seeing five hundred dollars a lot, so.
Well, and that's why I'm hoping that it would perhaps.
If they can't pay for somebody to clean their yard, they're gonna be able to pay for five hundred.
Yeah, and they should've thought about that. And that's also the reason why we're trying to have a cleanup day.
In the same part here, now, it says something about twelve months. That is why I'm reading that, is they have twelve months to clean it up. Usually the magistrate would give them a certain time limit, but I couldn't write another violation. but I couldn't write another violation.
No way.
Couldn't write another violation until twelve months, unless I'm reading that wrong.
No, it says within this, within twelve months. So for the purpose of this section, subsequent offenses means a violation of any provision of this ordinance committed by the same person within twelve months of the previous violation of the same provision of this ordinance. So basically, that's just saying that if you've gone out there multiple times, and they're not doing anything, and you cited them again additionally, because they have made no advances to clean anything up, they've done nothing, then that's when it starts adding on. But if you've gone out and given them a letter, and you go back, and they're moving stuff, they're arranging for things to be done, okay, well then, no, you're not, you're not gonna cite them again.
So just for clarification, you go write them a violation, give it to them, and then what happens?
Okay, they have thirty days to correct it, and if they don't, I have a, basically, it's like a book for the cops who use to write a ticket, same thing, I think, and I write them a ticket, I go to the court and.
File it.
File it with the clerk, and then they will, uh, yeah, set up a court date, and I'll get a summons up here, and the people will, and if they don't.
Goes to fault.
Yeah, I think then they put it on for their arrest.
How long is that process?
Not long, uh.
From when you turned it in?
I checked one, I don't know why it took so long recently, it took like three weeks, but usually it doesn't take that long.
Okay, that's good information.
Okay, so are we gonna extend the price to five hundred dollars period, or not? Or at least a suggestion, should we?
Well, we can only, we can only do these as what we want to change in our ordinance, and that's gotta go in front of the board for their approval.
Okay, so is this one we want to send for their approval?
Yeah, I, yeah, I gotta write down.
Okay, all right, just wanna make sure.
Also, there, it also says that, uh, let's see, where was that? Uh, each day during which any violation continues shall be deemed a separate offense.
That's all I second to that.
Well, when it goes to court, I've done that before, I, that didn't take somebody, I was in there talking to the magistrate one day, and each day during which a violation continues, it can be deemed a separate offense. I can't write them a second violation, because it has to go through the courts, and they have to
So that's.
Say it's the first one, then it could be the second one.
No matter what it says.
Yeah, I couldn't do it until, yeah.
Okay.
Should we take it out?
And sentences are on.
Should be, okay, yeah, they do have thirty days to do it, but it's.
I have on two oh seven A, says, "Any use of the land or is raised, extended, admired, altered, maintained, or changed